All right, it's six o'clock. It's made it time. We're gonna lock the doors.
Do a quick.
All right, so we'll, we'll call to order the September eighth, twenty twenty five Town Commission tentative budget public hearing. And introduce Gabby, who's our finance director.
Do a quick roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Satterfield?
Taylor.
Commissioner.
President.
Sherma McMullin.
President.
Thank you Kathy for reminding. Is it you?
No.
Hello? Hey.
Can you hear me now?
It's you guys.
Huh? It's them when they're talking. Testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three.
Oh, hello, hello.
Kind of ringing. Oh, well. Hello? Okay. Oh, my God. All right, well, good evening.
Oh, no.
Testing. Okay. If you don't know who I am, my name is Gabby Leon and I am the Director of Finance for the Town of Oakland. I am here to, tonight, present to the Town Commission and the Town residents the proposed millage and the tentative budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Am I good? Okay. All right. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to present to the public the proposed millage and the tentative budgets. The presentation will include any updates to revenues and expenditures for the general fund, enterprise fund, also known as the water fund, impact fees, and the charter school. Oh, wait, go back one. Yeah, okay. So, a little background, on June twenty fourth, the Town Commission held a work session on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Also, on June twenty fourth, the Commission approved the tentative budget for the charter school. As was mentioned during the work session, the budget was created using a six point seven millage, and that is still the case. So, we'll start off with the general fund. So, the total for general fund is eleven million, twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty nine dollars. This includes ten point five million dollars in revenue and operating expenditures and five hundred thousand of town revenue, uh, reserves. Um, as presented in the previous work session, property values increased by nine point three nine this year. We used the six point seven millage to balance the budget. And then without the use of the five hundred thousand, we would have had a deficit of over three hundred thousand. Um, so using that five hundred thousand, that leaves us a remaining reserve or remaining funds for any unexpected expenditures of a hundred and thirty five thousand. So, increases to the general fund. We were able to update the revenue estimates from the state and other funding sources. We also updated any year-to-date expenditures and updated the projections for the fiscal year twenty six accordingly. Now, this is all as of August, at the end of August. So, we did have a check run and then some more revenue has come through. So, for the final budget, I will update that again. So, you, those numbers might change for you. At the time of the budget workshop, we did not have our proposed fire rescue number. So, this line item increased approximately by four hundred and eighty thousand since then. I do want to mention, though, this was my bad, um, Vice Mayor, you had asked me if we had paid fire rescue. I thought we did. I was under the impression that we did. But when we received the new letter in July, I saw the way that it was broken down and I went to look at the previous letter. It, we did not pay it in full. So, we're still short two hundred thousand. Now, they haven't come to us for that two hundred thousand. So, I don't know if they're going to invoice us separately or if they're going to add it on the invoice. But the letter that they sent did not include that two hundred thousand. So, um, I think what happened was when the unapproved payment plan, I was asked to pay it. Um, that was a reduced payment for the first one. It should have been like a million forty three. We paid eight hundred thousand. The second letter came through to pay the one million forty three. I paid that because it matched what it should have been. So, we are short. That includes that five hundred thousand in the reserves. It's the two hundred from last year. I carried it over so that we could pay fire rescue. So, that is on me. I do apologize. Um, I thought it was paid, but it wasn't. So, I'll make sure that it gets paid. I promise. It'll be the first thing I do October one. I'll pay it. So, the budget also includes a three percent COLA to all town employees. It also includes an eighteen percent retirement contribution for all sworn officers. This is a two percent increase from last year's budget. And it also includes any longevity pay to any eligible employees. Uh, the budget also covers a hundred percent of the employee health insurance costs and the town added more plans to, um, offset some of the rising premiums, which came back at a nine percent increase from last year. We weren't sure what the final number was gonna be during the budget workshop, but it did come back at a nine percent increase. So, that is reflected in the budget currently. I do want to mention, I didn't put it on the slide, but I've been asked a couple of times, there was an increase to the PD other compensation. That is for the officers' off-duty pay. So, they are able to work events such as soccer games, concerts, Lakeside Church, that type of stuff. Those entities will pay the town for the officer's time and then we will then pay the officer through their pay, their payroll. We've normally have never accounted for that, but this year we broke over a hundred thousand in revenue. And so, because it comes out of the compensation line item, it's gonna show that PD is overspent in compensation and that's just not right. So, to have better, you know, line item recording and stuff like that, I put in a hundred thousand for the potential of money coming in for that and then the expenditure is in the PD compensation, the other. So, it balances, if that makes any sense. Same thing with overtime. You might see that there's overtime on certain line items. We've never really accounted for that. We've never been really fully staffed in certain departments. Um, but we should always have it just in case. So, last year we were fully staffed in all of our departments. So, we want to make sure that we're accounting it properly. We don't want it to be like a finding in our audit that we overspent in certain departments. So, I did have a lot of questions on that, so I just wanted to put it out there. I didn't think it would call so much attention, but it really did. Everybody was like, what's that hundred thousand? So, it's in there. So, decreases to the general fund. We've decreased the computer services by sixty five thousand. Um, and then we decreased the overall compensation for the town clerk budget. That was in part to the assistant town manager position being reduced or taken away essentially. And then the computer services was a project that we had already completed. We were able to downsize that, um, line item. So, those were the only changes. They weren't really changes, but that's all that's really made changes since the workshop to the general fund, that, big changes. Moving on to the enterprise fund or the water fund, the total budget for this is seven point five million. This includes four point three million dollars in grants and loans and then three point two in actual revenue and operating. Um, since the budget workshop, there were increases to the water revenue and wastewater revenue. This was also due to updating year-to-date, again, as of August, those numbers. Uh, the water fund also includes a three percent cost of living adjustment to all utility staff. Um, possible remaining funds in the amount of a hundred and forty five thousand. This is a huge difference from last year. Last year we only had thirty nine thousand dollars left in the utility fund and now we have a hundred and forty five thousand. So, that was nice to see. Impact fee. So, the total budget for impact fee is a little over five million. This includes three point two million dollars in projects and one point eight left in reserves. This next slide shows an overview of the projects for the, uh, impact fee budget. It's a little small, but they're in there. I know. I'm so sorry, guys. It's really small. Oh, there's copies, there's copies on the table if anybody wants to see it. Um, increases since the budget workshop, we, um, Kathy, can you switch to the next slide? Thank you. Um, we increased the, um, additional water plan and pump design from two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. We also, um, added a hundred thousand to the impact. So, impact fee budget had the most changes. We added a hundred thousand to Oakland Avenue and Daniel roadway improvements. We did an increase from fifty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand for Catherine Ross Road additional improvements. We did an increase from three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand for intersection improvements to Winter's Landing and Mackey. And then we added seventy five thousand to the budget for East Oakland Avenue sidewalk improvements. And then the final is gonna be the Oakland Charter School budget. So, this is their tentative kind of final budget. Their budget is a little over six point three million. This includes any updates to the FEFP revenue calculator that was released in July. It also, they also reviewed any current enrollment and adjusted those revenues as needed. Um, they also reviewed all of their end-of-year expenses based on categories and then adjusted the budget amounts as needed. They also had some staff, summer staff resignations and that required some staff reallocation. So, they rearranged some stuff in the budget for that. And they project a reserve of a little over twenty five thousand dollars. This is where I forgot to put the slide for public comment and questions. So, any public comment or questions?
Anyone, so, will, um, anybody in the public or have any comments or questions about the budget? No? Okay.
Does the Commission have any questions?
So, we'll go around the table. Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, so, um, I spent about an hour and a half with Gabby and Elise this morning going over the budget and, you know, highlighted items of significant increase that I noticed, which I would say like ten thousand dollars or more and ask questions about those. And, um, I expressed my concern over the fact that we're having to pull five hundred thousand dollars from our reserves to make the budget work. That's not a place I think we want to see ourselves in on a regular basis. I know the fire, Orange County Fire increased last year really changed the scope of our budget. We saw that last year and it's obviously affecting us again this year. We talked about the fact that, um, unfortunately, you know, if we increase our stuff to cover that, they're gonna ask for war for us. So, it's kind of a vicious cycle of trying to get ahead of that. So, um, you know, I, I do want to say to the town staff that I really appreciate all the work Gabby, you and the other department heads have done in putting the budget together. And task, I'm sure, the year to do this. But I'd like to ask everyone to be considerate of the budget. I mean, obviously, time from reserves is not a question we want to be in. And I think that we all, you know, I know we all met with Elise and Gabby as commissioners individually and for budgets for things. I think we all have to be very mindful of what we're spending and for the department heads. Um, can't speak for everyone on the Commission. I know for myself, going forward, any items that are brought in front of us to approve going forward, that I want to see in those presentations where that money's coming from and making sure that it's a budgeted item. And only in the rare case of some kind of emergency that we're going outside of that, we've, we've got to get this reined in. Because, you know, in my view, reserves are for emergencies. They're not for funding your budget every year. And I feel like we've gotta, we gotta get ahead of this. We know that there's a lot of growth happening in our town. Um, but more tax revenue from new houses is also gonna mean more expenses of, of those things too. So, until we get the commercial that we talk about and things like that, that can really start to kind of bump up our tax base. I just really want to ask everybody, including us, on what, anything that we're considering spending on the town's behalf, that we're just very mindful of it. And watching what we're doing and carving out where we can some savings, so.
Commissioner McMullin?
Uh, I'll be real brief. Um, I've been saying this for a long time. You know, we know the cost of everything is going up, you know, if you look at trash, whatever it is, everything is going up. We have to figure out a way, and I said this to Elise and to Gabby, on how are we going to increase our top line? We're gonna have to figure out a way to bring in other dollars. I, I keep, I've been saying this for a long time. We need a grant wire to come in to help us get some of these federal and these state dollars to offset some of this cost. Uh, just like Commissioner Keller's talking about, you know, we're gonna continue to go and dip into these areas of reserve and other places if we don't figure out a way. Now, we, commercials coming, yes, that's coming. But, you know, just like was mentioned, more housing come, more calls come, more, everything comes, more staff has to come. So, I'm, I'll just be real brief. We need to figure out how we're gonna bring in more dollars. And I've given this advice, I know, for multiple years. And I know we have some challenges. We have a lot of growth. Mike Parker has been the grant writer. He has been the everything. He can't do it. We, we have dollars in there. We really need to have someone dedicated to getting these free dollars that can help us to at least help us to get to a point because the dollars are there, the project is still coming, the growth is still coming. And then also when the other pieces with our special events, we need to figure out a way to bring in dollars to help cover our special events. I've talked about this before. You know, we're always chasing after people to help support. Had a meeting with Lannan's and others and I'm, you know, I know that was the first time. Whereas, you know, I remember when, when Mayor came on board, he was looking at the event cost per person, what's your cost to put on this event? And that was, that was something to look at. How do you, how do you offset that? We need to bring in, we got all these partners, bring in people to help us pay for these special events. Because, you know, we want to have a place that is, uh, fun and, and, and have for family. So, we don't want to be a stagnant place, but all, at the same time, we want to make sure that we could do it in a fiscal way. So, those two areas, not really two areas, my main point, we gotta bring some more money to, to help. Because, you know, the town was as a business, residents have increased, staff has decreased. You know, we moving some things around, but we need, you know, nine million, um, bu- dollar budget, ten million dollar budget. You know, saving fifty thousand dollars here or a hundred dollars a dollar here, it's not gonna make a real huge dent in this ten million unless we bring in monies outside to help us offset some of these costs. So, we can build our reserves and not have some of these scary moments that we have. Because we're a small town, we don't have diverse, uh, revenue coming in. I know they're doing a great job, but I really, really, really wanna say this publicly, we need a grant wire to come in to help us to access these free dollars. That's fine.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Very well said, Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Joseph. Um, I agree with both of you. Thank you very much, Gabby, Kathy, Elise, everything, the whole staff on this work. This is great. I think you guys did a great job. But I guess I don't want to reiterate everything that's been said. But I think the biggest dent and the huge, you know, diverse that we need to have is the commercial. If we keep on just doing the residential, you know, each residential dollar for dollar is not gonna make an impact if we keep on filling up with residential. We're always gonna be pinching pennies trying to squeak these there for the residential. But if the commercial finally gets developed here, we'll have the surplus that we all need to get our head above water. That's what I think. And we have to push that through grants or whichever which way you're in, through our comp plan or redesign, you know, investors, especially on Highway fifty. There's a lot of money sitting there on Highway fifty that we can be capitalizing every year for our town. That won't impact our way of life over here in the historic or the areas of our neighborhoods. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, not to be redundant, everyone has made pretty much the same points and it's not so much individual line items for this year because they're all, you know, very explainable. I too have been to all the different departments to ask questions on, on the whys and the hows of individually, what are we doing and how are we doing that with? So, I've got a very good understanding of where we are. I don't see any way that it could have been done any better than this document has. Um, you guys have done a tremendous job, but we're right. We've got to find a way to, at least for the next probably five years, bring in a significant amount of money, um, before we get completely built out and we lose the commercial end of it. We get built out and any of the impact stuff stops coming in the way it has. So, it's more of a, uh, the problem is more of a forward-thinking thing than it is this individual budget itself. As far as this budget, it, it's as good as it can get and it's a good solid budget. Um, and you guys did a great job with it. So, thank you all.
Great. So, um, just my takeaways from it, uh, yeah, it isn't, overall, it's a balanced budget. It is. Uh, unfortunately, it relies real heavy on, on the reserves. Point, it, it does. Uh, we're, uh, we're in a situation, the fire fees kicked in, as we tell, we're not trying to make that the excuse, but it is a reality is what happened with the fire fees and it took us a, a while to recover. Uh, we're gonna have, it's gonna take a while to cover. The good thing is, uh, tomorrow, uh, myself and, and the town manager, we have a, we have a meeting with the fire department that has asked to meet with us, uh, tomorrow. So, let's see where that goes. And, and we haven't stopped fighting, uh, to reduce because we do feel that, um, the, um, these, the Orange County Fire Department's put upon us is probably not a fair way to evaluate. How they evaluate is based on the valuation of, of, uh, the town and the property within the town. So, uh, for example, um, in this year, it went up nine percent. So, wherever they're charging, they're gonna sit there and they're gonna go up nine percent. I will guarantee you next year, property values will go up another. So, we have to try to see what we can do to get ahead of that. So, um, we're strategizing, trying to figure out the best way to, to, to do that. And we're anxious to hear what they have to say tomorrow. We'll let you guys, uh, know what that is. The, um, general fund, uh, what I like about that and the three percent, uh, is it creates that higher retention to employees that are here. So, you're not having that turnover to town employees. And if you don't know, whenever you have turnover in any business, it costs you more to retrain somebody than it does to keep that employee. So, you want to try to create a, 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 a place that your employees will want to be. And, and part of that is a compensation package that you can offer your employees. Same with, uh, our, our police department. Um, giving them that, uh, two percent increase in the retirement contribution, um, it allows, um, or, um, retention and probably recruitment as well that, that, that comes in to the, uh, to the police department. So, it makes us competitive with other, with other municipalities is what it does. Um, the enterprise fund is probably one of our most successful funds. Why? Because it's making money. Making a lot of money on, on water and sewer charges that go inside that. So, it's, it's, it's a good thing. So, we want to keep that enterprise ongoing, making money. And, and, and as Gabby said, you saw the, the increase from last year, uh, to this year on that. Um, the school, I know last year their, um, reserves were a lot higher than this year. It's twenty five thousand what they have in there for reserves. Not a lot. Um, you know, God forbid if an electrical panel blows or something like that, that could eat that whole reserve up. They don't have that budget and stuff. So, we'll have to keep a, a, a close eye on that. But, um, I have been told that the school is very, very tight on, on their budget and they believe they have everything, um, in there covered as well. Um, so, um, yeah, I, I, I think, uh, with this particular budget, um, in the total fiscal year budget right now, as it stands until you redo the numbers, we're counting everything. We're at twenty nine million, nine hundred ninety thousand dollars for this, for, to run the town and what we bring in. So, yeah. Anyone else in the audience have any questions after hearing us talk or anything? Yes, sir. Come on up and state your name for the record. Sorry, I know. Name and address.
Name's Brandon. I live at, uh, ten thirty seven Eagle Crest Drive. So, over in the new development at Oakland Park. My concerns when I was looking at the budget is nothing seems to really be forward-looking. Um, nothing is forward-looking to all the new houses that are going into the new developments. All those houses are probably starting price a million dollars, up to five million dollars. Um, I'm a new family here, I'm a young family. Um, I've been fortunate enough in my career to have afforded enough, um, savings to be able to purchase a nice home in Oakland Park. Um, that being said, I'm a young family with two kids, and my taxes are fourteen thousand dollars per year. Three thousand dollars more than an equal-priced home in, uh, Winter Garden. Winter Garden has paved roads, they have commercial, they have libraries, they have police, fire, water. A lot more than we have. I have dirt roads, a poorly maintained park. No marina. No library. Hardly anything. What are we paying for? Why are we unable to get a budget that works? How are we unable to look forward at, uh, the growth in this community? Um, why can't we get the investment that we want? We have five million dollar houses going in. Why don't we have a Whole Foods? Why can't we get the development and commercial that we need to pick up the excess budget that we want to afford for ourselves? I also have another question. It's six to seven million dollars going into the school. It's an A-rated school. It's populated by wonderful families who are buying your five million dollar houses and sending really great kids there to get that A-rating. Uh, how many kids are coming from out of Oakland that are accommodating that school? And why do I need to compete for my two kids to go into the school that I'm paying for?
All right, thanks.
Stay up here.
Yeah, what was that?
Would you like me to stay up here?
Oh, you, you don't, if you want to, you can and stuff. So let me, let me, let me just go back. So you're, you're new to the town, right?
About two years.
Two years, right. So the town has always been a residential-type bedroom community. Yeah, you're right. There hasn't been any forward-thinking as far as going commercial, and that's something that we're really working hard on. We have a great gold mine out there on fifty, and it's coming. Developers are coming, they're, 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 they have been into the planning department. Um, it takes, it's a process to go through. So we're behind on that. Okay? And when I say behind, not only are we lacking on commercial, but we're lacking on infrastructure as well. Let's just say the town was never built to handle what's come in, it's come in this fast. Look, you're right, it's one million to five million dollar houses that are coming in there, and that money is going in. Well, that also raises the, the real estate values of everything, and then we get hit with twenty-eight percent of our budget going to fire fees and public safety and stuff, right? So, um, the town was never set to have a library, was never set to have a marina or anything like that. Can't tell you that you moved here, and I'm hoping you're enjoying the, the park, and the park makes a lot of people happy, and the park gets used a lot. It's not gonna be a manicured park like what you see in, in Oakland Park or anything like that. It's just, it's not in the cards for us. We, we, we can't do it. Uh, we have-
What was your budget? Thirty million dollars?
Ten million dollars in the general. Ten million. We're running everything on ten million dollars for thirty-five hundred people in a town that's two square miles. So your hope, your hope, the hope and the goal is to get commercial to come in. And when that commercial comes in, that commercial's a big game changer.
Okay, it goes to my point, though, the, the forward-looking point. So you're gonna raise my millage rate?
I'm raising millage. Millage rate stays the same.
Uh, my assessment showed that it was gonna be higher next year.
Is that Orange County you're looking at, or are you looking at the towns? Because we are not raising the millage rate in that town.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, it's not, it, that is a, yeah, that's if you raise it, this is what happens. So that notice you have is a what could happen type notice. So these meetings are set to, to tell the county, when the county sends out those notices, you'll get a final notice that says this is gonna be your, your millage. So we're not raising, uh, the millage. Now, what's raising is the value of your house when you bought it last year. That's what's raising, and when you look at what you paid last year for your house, what your house is valued at last year, and what it's valued at this year, I guarantee you it, 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 it's gone up.
Okay.
By the way, for the record, we have been forward-thinking. Since Dennis, our town manager, came here, he started setting up forward-thinking eleven, fifteen years ago. This town did not have the infrastructure that Winter Garden set up twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago. So there was no sewer in our town or big commercial, um, box office or hotels or whatnot to come in here without putting a lot of money out of their money to build, because there's no infrastructure as far as sewer. I mean, a lot of the utilities, so it was set up, that's why there's no asphalt, there's no storm drainage, it was just dirt roads. So it's a small-town feel that I think is more than thirty-five hundred. Close to five thousand.
I'm sorry, it is more than that. It's six sixty, almost six thousand people, sorry.
If you see them connect what we bring in to manage six thousand people versus Winter Garden with, I think they're at pretty eight thousand, and they have like three hundred, four hundred million dollars over there that they manage. I mean, we're, we are, this town and the staff and how we are, we are super lean, very, very lean. I'm surprised that we're still in business here in this town to run everything that we do and satisfy all our citizens with the little we have. Now, we did plant those seeds a long time ago, the sewer and the infrastructure, so we can finally get companies to come out here and invest on Highway fifty, and none of, but nobody on the board here, the new ones, all the old ones who've been here for years, talking about Mike Satterfield, who's been here close to thirty years, has ever been against bringing in more investments. Investors just, were just skipping over the town of Oakland. Went to Claremont or to Winter Garden, because we weren't ready for them. We are ready for them now. And things will be changing, like the mayor said, and the vice mayor, in the next five years, it'll be a big change. But the benefit of people who have come here to Oakland is that their homes have gone up. We're one of the ones around West Orange that are residential, our homes, and everyone here gets to enjoy, has gone up at least the last ten years as first, uh, percentage-wise compared to Winter Rian, O'Quoy, Winter Garden, Horizon West. We've way ahead, you know, country mile ahead of them on how much our town, um, homes have valued. So as the value goes up in your home, you're gonna be paying more taxes. And we're hoping to start bringing that millage down in the future as soon as we get more commercial and more investment in.
Just, just keep in mind that the general consensus is that the people who have just moved into this, um, locality in the past few years are fully subsidizing the town, and it feels that way. We're coming here because of Winter Garden, not because of Oakland. We just happen to be in an Oakland address. So we're paying a lot of extra tax to support the town. I would like to see some, some dividends paid, you know? Balance your budget. Please don't keep raising our taxes. We're gonna crush under the weight of it.
Oakland's expensive. I understand.
We, you know, I, I built my house here, fortunately, uh, six years now, almost, so um, I got in before things really started going up, and I also moved from Orange County, so I have some tax advantages from being in the state previously, but um, you have a choice, and, you know, as a, as a home, as a home buyer, um, you have to do your due diligence. I mean, I considered three different locations when I was building my house, and I knew that by, building my house in Oakland was gonna cost me um, a hu, you know, a hundred thousand dollars more than it was gonna cost me if I built it in Claremont, and I also knew that my taxes were gonna be higher here. But I wanted Oakland and I wanted this location, and there is a cost for that, and, um, part of that is we are just not as big. You can't compare Winter Garden or other municipalities, because we're very unique here because of the size of our town. So our taxes are gonna be higher than the surrounding areas just based on our size, our actual size, two square miles, and then, you know, the number of residents that we have here, so, um, I think that that's something that, you know, you have to remember as well, is that, you know, I understand you are in Oakland Park, and you just happen to be on the side that's Oakland, but um, when doing your due diligence, you would have found that the taxes were gonna be higher here than they are in Winter Garden, because there's a much broader base this, the, you know, the cost across than there is here.
Brandon, I feel you. I've been paying over fifteen thousand dollars for the last sixteen years in my home here in Oakland, but I love Oakland, and I wouldn't change it for one bit.
Let me add on, Brandon, you had another question about school and, and your children competing to get into school. As an Oakland resident, we have five hundred and twenty-five kids that go to that school, and it was built for seven hundred, but that size reduction has cost us. Um, and that's why we struggle monetarily, but on the top of the, the chain for the lottery are Oakland residents. So if you're an Oakland resident, you shouldn't be competing with people that are out of, uh, you know, out of the, uh, town limits. So, and, and if that's the case, you know, after, you'll catch up to me, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that, but your, your children, if they're, well, they are Oakland residents, would get at the top of the list for the pool for the lottery. Is that what happened to you? Your kids didn't get in? It's just, it's being recorded, people home.
A lot of families opted to go with the VPK program that Oakland Charter, um, offered. It's a full-time program that you pay out of pocket for, and the vast majority of those families did not want a full-time program. They opted to do it anyway, so that they had an option to go to Oakland Charter for kindergarten. There were two open slots available for Oakland residents, uh, for kindergarten this year. I'm being told there's gonna be more next year. I'm hoping there is, because I opted not to send my kids to a full-time program and pay out of pocket for it. So my worry is that next year, when I try to send my son to kindergarten, I'm gonna be competing against families who live down in Horizon West that already have a kid established in the school, and they're the number one priority, not Oakland residents. So that's a correction for you. And I think there's a lot of families that are living out of town that opted to go to Oakland Charter, because it's a higher-rated school. Why wouldn't you? But now that our town is swelling, and the vast majority of families that are coming in have kids my age, it's a concern for us. If you're gonna have a bunch of students coming in from out of town, you might want to cut down on those numbers. And again, forward-thinking, all these houses that are going in have four, five, six bedrooms in them, are all full of kids, all right? So need to consider that. That's, that's my two cents.
It's funny, uh, you know, because when my kids, uh, went to Oakland Charter School, I think my daughter, oldest daughter, went there a year after it was open. It seemed Oakland was just jam-packed full of kids, right? And then all those kids went, and then they left, and then there were really no kids in Oakland. Wasn't that, that large of a place, and then-
It's changed now.
It's changed, and it's a good thing, right? Because you'd love to get back to just, hey, it's all Oakland kids coming in. Because for the longest time there, it was, it was all pretty much ninety percent Oakland kids that were going there. But yeah, I mean, we, we're excited about the growth. We're excited to have you in the town. Nobody's disputing that at all. Um, I, I think there's a, there's some history that goes along with, with when you come in. Be happy to talk to you about it offline, no, no problem. Um, but, um, no, I mean, this is, this is very helpful, your comment, and what you're saying, because I, I, I do, I mean, Sal pays a lot for his house, I, I pay a lot for mine as well, and, and it's houses, your houses and other houses and Bryley Farms that's coming up. Every one of us in here, our house values go up. Because everybody wants to now be in Oakland. It's the last little piece of what it is, so.
Good.
Thanks.
I just pay a lot of tax. I'd like to send my kid to the one school that's in the town. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything else? Yes, all right, John?
On Hammerstein three oh six East Vic Avenue. Just some questions, maybe not appropriate for this meeting, maybe they are. Um, I don't understand how the Orange County Fire Department is structured here. In other words, do they own that building? Does Oakland own that building? How many calls are they doing out of Oakland versus in Oakland? Where, where is the real equity there for these higher rates? Is Orange County funding some of that also? How does that break down? Is there any demographic on that?
Yeah, good question. Um, that's the, that's the, that's the issue. Uh, so the building is a, a, a JPA joint partnership agreement between Town of Oakland and, and, and Orange County. So they kind of own half, and we, we own half, uh, when it was done back in two thousand and sixteen? No, no, nine? Yeah. Yeah, okay, that back, okay. That there is a, there is a bond that the town has on it as well, that there, that we still cover, we're still paying for, and I think that goes to, where does that go? We talked about it today. Thirty, twenty, thirty-two? Twenty thirty-two, seven years. And that's, uh, that, and then out here too, when we did the, uh, town square back in the day. So it, it, the way the model is set up, and we're not the only ones in this, uh, we're, we're in it, Eatonville's in it, Edgewood's in it, and Bell Isle's in it, because they all contract for fire services through Orange County as well. The municipalities, if you look at some of these municipalities like Bell Isle and Edgewood, they, they didn't raise their millage last year like we did to try to get ahead of it. Well, now, this year, you look, they're having to raise it up. And it seemed to be a catalyst for, for all municipal fire departments, so O'Quoy just raised theirs. Because what happens is it's like, Orange County is kind of the, the top, you know, and it goes, so then everybody starts jumping on board and stuff. Um, so how they do it is based on a, a millage that's in your trim, and they base it on the valuation of your house. Now, how many calls did they made to Oakland proper residents versus Turnpike or Highway fifty? I guess there's probably more on Turnpike and Highway fifty than they do here in Oakland. So those are the information we're hoping to gather tomorrow, and hopefully they'll be able to say, all right, you're right, it's not equitable. It's not fair. Yeah. Right. So how this whole process started is like, you know, when, when we first started the whole conversation about it last year, we weren't happy about it, and I just kept pushing it and pushing it. Anytime I ever got in front of a Orange County Commissioner, or an Orange County official, or had somewhere with Gary Demings or whatever, I always bring it up. And then at a chamber meeting, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, Commissioner Scott, which is the vice mayor, uh, of Orange County, I was talking about it again. And about, we, we just got the letter in the mail, uh, you know, it went up again, and he kind of had this look on his face like, really? So then he kind of got involved, and then Nicole Wilson got involved. So, um, with those folks, uh, we're meeting with her tomorrow, and, and Chief Rios, who's headed the fire department, along with, uh, um, Byron Book, who's the head administrator for the county tomorrow. But we'll see where it goes tomorrow. See, but we're not, I don't want to pay it. I don't think that twenty-three percent of our budget could go to the Orange County Fire Department. You know? I mean, look, I, I mean, get me wrong, I, I've said this before, when you need them, you need them. You know, and you'll pay anything to get them, but let them get there. Oh, yeah.
And with the church?
No, it's, it's like a public school.
We get funded through the state for a student. That's how most of the money comes in, and we have the lottery every year with, with a pecking order for that five hundred and twenty-five kids. Uh, the only thing required is, uh, this, uh, community, not community service, but a volunteer service. They have to do volunteer service, uh, parents do, as they go through to help out the school in lieu of a payment.
Yeah, just like a public school like, um, um, down the street. Yeah.
They, they don't-
Kill the bill, thank you.
They don't cover, uh, the same, they cover less than they do at a public. So we still have to, uh, uh, you know, struggle to make do. However, we have a PTO that, that actually gives us anywhere between fifty and eighty thousand dollars every year for their fundraisers, and that really subsidizes it and, and keeps us strong.
One last little comment.
Coming up. October twenty-second? Yeah. We'll send you an invitation. Yeah. 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 Absolutely, everybody who came up. Yeah. That's right. Yeah, so that's coming up on the October twenty-second. So I hope everybody comes to that. And it will be, what was that over at the Heritage Center, right? Heritage Center.
There'll be plenty of ice cream, John.
Make a potluck.
Yeah, yeah. You know, if you want to put that all into perspective from back in the days when we were young men, John, starting off doing the nineties, our budget was like two and a half million compared to what we are right now. So in in thirty years, that's where we have gone to. So on on the same two by two mile square, so it is phenomenal where we have gone.
Anyone else? We got two more minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Evening, Sarah Meyer. I live at four oh two East Vic Avenue. I just wanted to say that I actually like the sleepy town. When my husband and I moved here seventeen years ago and started our family, we live on a dirt road, and we actually wanted to live on a dirt road, and we like our more natural feel of the parks here. Not necessarily want to live in a manicured Park Avenue type of atmosphere, but I'm not anti-growth, and I am looking forward to some of the things that are coming. But speaking of dirt roads, I wanted to get very specific and ask if in our budget there was anything for paving East Vic Avenue due to all of the growth that has come.
We're going to we're going to talk about it at the seven o'clock meeting, if you can, if you can hang around, to talk about to talk about the dirt roads and improving those and in the schedule. As if you remember, we did a study. We had we had something done back in March, March or May of this year. So we're we're going to do that. But to answer your question, there is there is stuff in the budget.
Okay, and is it is it coming out of the impact fee fund?
Well, so yes, and some of it is maintenance as well.
Right, so can someone explain to me how the impact fee fund works? Is it you get improvements as the funds come in from impact fees, or can you start work right away?
Right, so that seven o'clock is going to clarify all of that on what can be used for impact fees on on the road improvements and and what cannot be used. But I think you'll be pleased. We think we've come up with
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I have a question for Gabby, just to fulfill a procedural requirement here. Gabby, could you please announce the percent by which the proposed millage rate exceeds the rollback rate from last year?
It exceeds by nine percent.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't know I had to mention that in this one. I thought it was the next one.
You were you were ready to do it.
I was so ready.
Anybody else? Everybody here good on the table? Everybody's good? Okay. So with that, we'll close. Oh, sorry, uh-oh.
This is where you're going to do your motions, please.
This is where we have to approve everything.
Okay. Thought we did that at the seven o'clock meeting.
No.
This is not a work session, it's a
This is an actual budget. So we have ten minutes to approve everything.
Ready.
Okay, well, I need a slide. Okay, so requested action is to approve the millage rate of six point seven, which is the existing rate from last year and this year to request approval for the tentative budgets. So that would be the general fund, the enterprise fund, impact fees, and the charter school. And then request approval for the final public hearing, which would be September twenty-third at six P M. Now, that meeting is a on a Tuesday and on a Monday, so, okay?
Time set here.
Yes, please, one at a time.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to approve the tentative millage rate for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six at six point seven.
Make a motion to approve the millage rate at six point seven.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is approve the tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then finally, the approved final budget public hearing date of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at six P M. That's a Tuesday right here.
I will make a motion to request approval with a final public hearing date of September twenty-third, Tuesday.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Good?
I think so. Are we good?
Good, thank you, guys. We'll reconvene in ten minutes. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started with the seven o'clock regular town commission meeting for September twenty twenty-five. But please stand for the pledge and remain standing. Thank you. Kathy, roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sederfield. Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Commissioner McMullin.
Thank you. We've had a proclamation tonight. We'll start out with Town of Oakland Hispanic Heritage Month. If you get a chance, there's a new exhibit opening up at the Heritage Arts Center that celebrates this as well. Whereas throughout Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the history and contributions that Hispanic Americans have made to the state of Florida. And Florida has the third largest population of Hispanic people in the nation, with more than five million diverse residents within the Sunshine State. And we honor the rich and vibrant traditions of Hispanic Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And Hispanic Americans have played an important role in the history of Florida from the early days of the pioneer to our current legacy of leaders in international trade, technology, education, and aerospace. And Hispanic Floridians have been an integral part of our communities, whose contributions, passions, and skills as agricultural workers, farm workers, and growers have long shaped Florida's agricultural success. And from September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, we pay tribute to the dedication and service of Hispanic Floridians for their efforts to improve the state of Florida and pave the way for future generations of leaders. Now, therefore, I Shane Taylor, by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the Town of Oakland, and on behalf of the entire town commission, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five in the Town of Oakland as Hispanic Heritage Month. You? Next on the list is the Town of Oakland Constitution Week, twenty twenty-five. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five marks the two hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document in its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I Shane Taylor, Mayor of the Town of Oakland, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five as Constitution Week in the Town of Oakland, Florida, and ask our citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which the privilege involves. Right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Members of the board, did we have a chance to take a look at that? And any questions or comments? No hearing done? Gain a motion for the minutes from the eight twenty-six, twenty twenty-five Town Commission, right here.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Other policy matters tonight are the unpaved street improvements, prioritizing and funding. So Public Works Director Mike Parker.
Mike Parker, Public Works Director for Town of Oakland. So I'm hoping this will be the last discussion for a while on road improvements. But who knows? At the May thirteenth Town Commission meeting, our traffic consultant, excuse me, Myra Monreal, gave a presentation on the types of materials that could be used to improve the town's unimproved streets. She also presented a priority listing of the streets to be improved based on increased traffic flows generated as a result of new development. At that time, the Town Commission adopted the prioritization listing. Subsequently, there was much discussion about the use of impact fees to pay for the improvements. In the report or memorandum before you tonight, Myra speaks in her own words about how this initiative meets the the dual rational nexus test. Or simply put, how can how we can justify the use of impact fees to perform these improvements? Now, I'm no attorney, and I'm sure Stephanie will will correct me if necessary. However, I'm of the understanding that Florida courts use a dual rational nexus analysis to determine whether the use of impact fees are valid whenever the use is challenged. So the first nexus is the need. So you have to demonstrate a reasonable connection between the fee and the need for additional facilities generated by the new development. So I think we have that. The second nexus is the benefit. You have to to demonstrate a reasonable connection between the expenditure of the fee proceeds and a benefit to the fee payer. The funded facilities must benefit the class of property owners who paid the fee within a reasonable geographic area. So I think we have that. So staff is of the opinion that the dual rational nexus will be met and that the memorandum supports that opinion. The recommendation tonight is that the Town Commission reaffirm the prioritization list and provide or authorize funding from transportation impact fees, beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. And in in saying that, or in addition, staff will will come back to the commission with each specific project as they are designed or or planned out to gain specific approval. So if that makes sense, you've got the agenda memo in front of you, and that's our recommendation. You, well, you have to you have to use the rational, the dual rational nexus. You know, it has to be of a benefit to the ratepayer. And like, you can't you can't use impact fees to repave already paved roads. You you can't. And can be, yes, that that's my understanding of it. Let's let's use this for example, so Simeon Road north of Trailside subdivision has four homes on it. You could not use transportation impact fees to pave that road.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get to. So, yeah, that's that's, I just want to clarify that certain roads can be used for transportation impact.
Correct.
And certain roads cannot.
And
And and our our transportation consultant would then tell us, hey, this is this is what we feel can be used.
I think I think it would be a combination of our transportation or or our traffic consultant and our town attorney would make that determination. You know, we as staff are going to put together a a project package that makes sense, and we won't do it in a vacuum, so.
Okay, all right. Any questions here on the table?
So I just want to reiterate, so from the budget, I know when I met with Elise and Gabby this morning, we talked about the fact that the dirt road resurfacing material had been removed from the budget for next year because the dirt roads can be done because of the impact fees. That's why that line item was removed, right?
Yes.
And then we have money in here for the roadwork on the existing paved road.
That's correct.
And then the schedule that Myra put together here in the presentation that was part of the packet is the way we're going to progress forward?
More or less. There were a couple of streets identified as as needing no improvement, and they had to meet certain criteria that are laid out in that report. And part of that is, you know, the the residents' feelings about the streets. You know, if you've got a a resident that lives at the end of a block, he has or she has three streets surrounding that property and may not want it improved, whether it met the criteria or not. So those are those are the the little, you know, things that we'll have to deal with as we move forward.
So to your point, as we determine which roads are going to be done, you're going to bring that back to us and let us know what the process of that's going to be.
Yes.
And all along, we're we're gonna, our our schedule of roads to do are are what's in the report from, was that May?
May thirteenth.
Thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, which currently had Oakland Shores being done at that point in time, I think, when this report was was done. And then we have other streets that's next, which is East Gully, Walker, Daniels, Henchon, Fabburn, Gully again. And then you have a few roads as design build on here as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
That require drainage or some other, you know, something that that deals with it. If it's on a slope, you know, it it may not be a candidate for the the asphalt millings. It may have to have hot mix.
Okay, and clarify, we're we're we've identified roads that are would would get the asphalt milling treatment, not traditional pavement roads.
No, in the report, it has traditional roads that are that have met the rational, the dual rational rational nexus. They're in that report to be done as well. And it is a about a five-year process, but we're hopeful that we can move it along a little faster than that.
Want to clarify that.
Yep.
That certain roads will, certain roads will have the traditional asphalt, and certain roads will have the milling.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And not everything in this report will be done this year.
No, not not at all.
Okay. So you need from a, I'm going to ask anybody in the audience that like to have any questions or anything. Anyone? All good? Did you have something? Because last time you Sure.
And so I just, I'm not seeing it in the study where it says which roads will get asphalt versus which will get milling. I'm sorry, pavement versus asphalt. I'm just missing it.
Let's see.
The ones that show as design build are
The hot mix. Yeah, or the traditional asphalt.
Great.
Like North Daniels.
You're talking about in the like the PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah.
This thing, so
So that would be your street right there.
Right.
This, you read that?
It says improved roads, as if and already done, and it doesn't specify the material. That's why I was just asking for something there.
Yeah. Think that'll come with the the project that we come back to commission with and, you know, I I heard what you said, you you like living your road like this.
Well, I did. I did until we got all the new traffic, and now the dust is unbearable, so.
Until what? I'm sorry.
Till new traffic and development.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
So now the dust
Going from start to tub.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, Vic Avenue. East.
Yeah, okay. So I I think we have that. If I recall, I believe the original study was done, it was identify roads that that met this and 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 utilizing those asphalt millings, recycled asphalt millings. I I think we need to probably go back and and clarify and make sure and find out what's going to get the traditional asphalt. I mean, I think we've heard it enough where and and we've seen it enough that and we've discussed it enough that we think that, like, and we've discussed it enough that we think that, like, East Vic is probably a candidate for that. You know, there's millings on it right now. I, I do think that the asphalt, recycled asphalt millings that were put around Mather Smith and, and all that came out really well. You know, and, and, and we discussed also, and I'm not picking on your neighborhood because there's other neighborhoods as well that should benefit from this. But Arrington as well, trying to overlay Arrington as well. So there's a little bit, I think, clarification we need to, unless somebody else has got anything else to.
No, I agree with the Vic, I mean, Mike, we're waiting on you to get the full study and put that presentation because we all requested for Vic to be a hard look at it for traditional asphalt. And there's, again, a lot of other residents waiting for their roads to get done with the, with the millings.
I, I would say we all need to take a look at work.
Yes.
That supplies all those roads by name. I don't remember what East, East Vic was, you know, recommended for. It was either millings or regular asphalt.
I, so, so when we did the report, we had Myra look at that area, and at that time, asphalt millings were recommended. We can have her revisit Lieutenant East Vic, but that was the recommendation at that time, which is what to report.
And I apologize if I didn't have the full report. Some of those graphics, they look the same from slide to slide. Like, the list of roads on the side is different, like, it changes, but the actual graphic doesn't change at all, so it doesn't really make any sense.
Yeah, I think the priority, how it's labeled out on, on the report, it would, I, I'm happy with the priority and how it's laid out. I don't have an issue with that, just from the, the traffic that you see. I mean, priority one would be East Gully over here. That runs from Winter's Land, Winter's Landing to the Tub Street, or Star Street. That little section right there, because there's a lot of people that go up and cut around, and they're doing that. Next would be Walker, that's down by Bryley Farms and running it all the way up to Oakland Avenue. So I think that the priority here is, I'm in favor of it, just from what you're seeing.
And it's Vic on that priority list?
Vic was on the currently in progress, East Vic, Tub to Star was on there. Now, what we need to go back, and that's what I'm not seeing is, okay, if the report, original report had asphalt millings going down, down that road, now we need to take another look at that and find out, are we going to get real hard asphalt on that?
So the study's recommendation.
Studies just all recommend, yeah, and then Mike will bring it back to everybody and say, hey, I'm recommending that we do traditional asphalt on East Vic and, and not the millings. Or I recommend that we do the millings over here.
We, we just have to get it justified by a traffic consultant or somebody like that to be able to use the transportation impact.
Gotcha, and I know one of her recommendations was connector roads that go from new development to Oakland Avenue, but I feel pretty easily you could add Tub Street into that. You know, connector roads that are going from new development to Tub Street could easily be put in those recommendations.
Yeah.
And that would help to justify that.
It makes sense, right? It does make sense. What we want to make sure is that we're not doing something that we're not supposed to with the funds. That we're using the funds as we should be using it. Impact fees can be used, we have, you know, a million dollars in there for transportation impact that we could use. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Mike? Were, were you asking for a motion from them at the end?
Okay.
Okay, Scott Ren, 305 Edgewood, I just want to talk on the discussion of the Oakland Shores neighborhood. The commission had decided to use asphalt millings on that neighborhood before the study came out by our consulting company. That's why East Vic was never considered for paving because you decided to do it before the consulting and the street list for further improvement came out. Now, with that being said, the millings that were finally reinstalled on Mather Smith and Edgewood are actually up to par with what you said the millings were be, would be. They are dust-free. So I am asking, seeing as, you know, the ones on Vic or not, and the ones on Arrington or not, Arrington's going to be upgraded with the ones that are there. Moving forward, is the town going to continue to use the same contractors so they get the same material? Okay, yeah, because otherwise it won't be me up here, it'll be people on different roads complaining about the dust for the new milling. So, okay.
Thanks, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, oh, yes, sir.
I just had a quick.
Yeah, sure.
We keep kind of.
Name and address.
David Elsall, twenty-one, twenty-one North Daniels. Hey, um, can you just confirm, just run down the list of the priorities, because we kind of were.
Yeah, yeah, I can, just for everybody to know, yeah, absolutely. Let me get to it real quick here, sorry. So you're on?
North Daniels.
Daniels? So there's something that's, you want to explain North Daniels real quick, what's happening?
Yeah, so he will be impacted by two improvements. One is a transportation impact fee already in place for the turnouts that we do, you know, off of Oakland Avenue on the unpaved roads, the paved access, that sort of thing. And then along with that project, we will be installing millings down to West Henshaw. And right now, that's out for pricing. I've got one back, happy to say it's within budget, so that's good. And it's going to happen pretty quick.
Okay, okay. And then the rest from Henson to the trail, that'll be, is that part of the, the next?
Yeah.
Is it was in the priority list there?
If I'm looking at the priority list, you know, on, on the, on the presentation, it's first on the list is East Gully, which is over here. Next on the list is North Walker Street, and that would be from Bryley to Oakland Avenue. Third on the list is Daniels, from Bryley to Oakland Avenue. Fourth is West Henson, from Walker to Tub. Okay, and fifth is West Sadler, from Walker to Tub. And then sixth is West Gully, from Walker to Daniel. Okay, and then you have the design build, which Mike was saying that there might be some infrastructure improvements that have to happen for that. So your, your third on the list.
Yeah, and then, well, West Henson.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
Attention and Daniels myself, so, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, so we'll close it down and bring it back. And Mike, you're looking for a motion to accept the schedule and to? Yep. Right, okay, so a motion made, anybody would like to make the motion, sorry.
That the proposal for the unpaved street improvements, the prioritization of them, and the funding from transportation impact fees.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Great, moving on to a public forum, and this would be, anybody would like to discuss anything that's not on our current agenda? Do we have any takers tonight? All right, I don't see any, so we'll close public forum and we'll bring it back to you, Town Manager.
Okay, just a couple reminders, we have Farmer's Market this Thursday from nine to two. And then on Friday, we do have an exhibit opening for the exhibit that Mayor Taylor was talking about. It's called Roots and Memories, and that will be opening Friday, September 12th at 5:30 PM at the Arts and Heritage Center. And then a week after that, we have Friday, September 19th, our block party from 5:30 to eight. And then the Saturday following that, we have the Oakland Nature Preserve Nature Fest from nine to one, obviously at the preserve. So those are some of our upcoming fun events. You know, if you know people that are new to town and don't know what we do, invite them to come and see some of our events. That's really all I have.
Thanks. Mel, you have anything good? Nothing? Andrew's joining us tonight, if you guys haven't met Andrew, if you go to Town Hall, he's head of all the utility billing as well, so Andrew's here, so welcome, Andrew. Do you have anything? Okay, great, Chief?
Hi, this is terrible. No, just along the lines of funding, something that Kelly Sims has really been working on. When I got here, almost three years ago, we had two grants, one for one thousand, one for ten thousand, and that's it. That's all we got for the police fund. This year, we've obtained seventy-seven thousand dollars, hundred percent due to Kelly Sims and the work she's done. The grants were written specifically for equipment that we'll be using. One is a side-by-side, four-seater side-by-side that we can use for, in the event of storms, hurricanes, natural disasters, anything like that. It has been purchased as of last week, and we're waiting on it to get upfitted, and we'll take delivery of it, and I'll bring it out here so you can see it. We'll also be using it for any of the events that we have here. Heritage Day, celebration, any of that, we'll be using that to get through and navigate the crowds better than what we could in a car or on foot. And then also, she was able to save thirty-two thousand dollars for a drone, which we will be using for the same. We'll be using that for assisting in search area searches and things like that, critical, critical incidents, events, emergencies, and also for any of the events around the town, like Heritage Day and things like that. Use it for monitoring crowd safety and things like that. But without her work, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to secure that. That's sixty-five, sixty-six thousand dollars more than what we had gotten over the past. So I'm very, very thankful for the work that she's putting in. She's also applied with the federal government, two years now in a row, for us to get additional staffing, federal grants to get two new officer positions. Unfortunately, those have been denied, but she's, keep trying. So we're trying really hard to get the money. We know that we don't have the money, we're doing what we can.
She does a great job, and does two roles, Public Information Officer for the town too. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, all right, good deal. Anything from, new from Public Works besides?
Okay, well, I wanted to talk about grants too. So about six days ago, we, the town applied for another two million dollar grant opportunity. So you, one thing's for sure, if you don't apply, you won't get it. So we're hopeful, you know, we'll find out in about six months if we get that. And that will go for additional septic-to-sewer infrastructure. That's all.
Gabby, anything for you?
I feel like I've said enough. But, no, I just wanted to introduce Andrew. He's our new utility billing supervisor, if anybody's seen him at Town Hall. We also have a new UB clerk, his name is Vernon. I'm sure people have seen him, he used to work at Publix, so everybody seems to.
He's a checkout.
Yeah.
West Garden, you, you'll recognize the guy, because they took me a minute, and I was like, I know I've seen that guy somewhere.
So. Yeah, so there's.
Twice, then saying, hey, Mike, my bill's real funny, and he looked at me like, oh my God, what do I do now?
Don't scare him. But yeah, so if you see either of their faces, they're new to the town, but we're very happy to have them. That's all I have.
All right, Kathy, this will.
The Charter Review Committee is meeting this month on Wednesday, September 24th at four o'clock, and it should be their last meeting. The proposed charter questions will come before this commission by way of an ordinance with the first and second reading, which will be open for the public to comment, and that we are looking forward to coming before you in October. Now, business tax renewals are due by the end of this month. So make sure you pay them, or you may incur a late fee.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Keller?
Well, in keeping with what Chief said about Kelly doing multiple jobs, I do really want to call out, she's, I think she's doing a great job for the PIO stuff, and it's been really great to see. And along with that, I'm going to be a broken record about this. Follow the town pages. If you want to know what's going on with the town, follow the town Facebook and social media because, you know, I, I'm seeing other pages where people are complaining about their taxes or whatever, and, you know, all these conversations that happen on other social media sites. That's great, but it doesn't get you any correct information. If you want the information, follow the town pages, come to the town meetings, and I will hit them.
Last week on September 2nd, I know it was quiet, but we did have a special election. And in the town of Oakland, we have a new senator, Senator Levon Bracy. We lost General, Geraldine Thompson back in February, and so we now have a senator, she'll be sworn in soon. And so the good thing about that is Levon Bracy was a state rep for District Forty, just a little bit east of us. She didn't cover our area, but she was a supporter of the town of Oakland. And as you know, when we go for those dollars, it's not just one or two people that are voting for us, it's the entire Senate and the House, you know, representatives, state reps voting for us. So she, she moves into that state senate. I spoke to her, she's, you know, she was already ready to continue, you know, supporting us as a town as relates to us going for those, those dollars. And then a young man that ran for her seat, where's her aide, Rashawn Young? I met him last year when I was in Tallahassee, he's a supporter of Oakland. So we're not losing any kind of support, we're actually gaining support with Levon Bracy coming over as our senator, and Rashawn Young will be a local state rep to come alongside all of the other state reps that have, I do know us in the town of Oakland, so I really feel we're in a good position to have a continued advocate on the senate side as relates to us going after dollars for our infrastructure product. So Levon Bracy, of course, you know, that's the brother of, that's the previous Senator Bracy, that's their siblings, so. But now we have Levon Bracy as our new senator. Make sure we know that, and hopefully we can continue to be successful as relates to us getting dollars from the state with her being in that seat.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramos?
Just want to give you guys an update on the municipality advisory committee, Metro Plan Orlando, September 4th. I went downtown to Orlando for our meeting, and I just want to give you an update from the rep for the Florida Turnpike Enterprise, Ms. Victoria Williams. I sent her several emails, and Elise was part of it, with pictures of, seven pictures of seven signs as you travel on the Florida Turnpike, northbound, our exit has seven signs that say, welcome to Winter Garden, welcome to Oakland, I mean, welcome to Winter Garden, and welcome to Quermont. Does not mention Oakland. So she was well aware of it, she mentioned it, and she said that they were going to give us an update on the plan of action. My next meeting is November 6th in downtown Orlando, which they're going to give us a plan of action to fix that because, obviously, that exit is one hundred percent Oakland. And the next guy online that I have is the rep for FDOT, Mr. John Scarf, to also show him that, you know, send him an email with the pictures of, as you travel west on Colonial, this is, welcome to Oakland City Limits. Not the city, we're a town. Even if we build out Colonial and Commercial, and we build out one hundred percent, five, 10 years from now, we'll still be the town of Oakland. And I want to remind them to change the sign as well. So I'll give you guys an update after the November 6th meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll get back to everyone, I'm going to work with Pam over. So I'm sorry.
That's, that's why I sit next to you, because you can pull this, I can see the dirty look. That was the dagger, was that whatever? It was brought up today, whether non-Oakland residents that are in VPK get priority over kindergarten Oakland residents. And that is certainly not the intent that Oakland residents don't get priority, so I will look into that with Pam and report back when we figure out.
So just piggybacking on the school, our, I like to, I like to promote the town anniversaries of longevity, and one of our teachers, Mrs. Ramda Hall, who my daughter had as well, she's been there for eight. and one of our teachers, Mrs. Ramda Hall, who my daughter had as well, she's been there for 18 years. So pretty long time, so I like to, I feel they've been there 10 plus years. And again, I like to just reiterate, Elise, and, and the events that are coming up, there's a lot, it's getting cooler out. There's a lot more events coming out at town, though the block party on the 19th in front of the Heritage Center on the trails from 5:30 to eight. And John, yeah, the state of town address on the 22nd, we'll certainly do that. Encourage everyone to come there, you get, and we get a free dinner out of it, if there's food left over. And the thing we got is Music Under the Oaks, which is an 80's, 90's cover band, it's going to be kind of fun. I think we'll get a lot of people on that as well. So with that.
Somebody's satisfied, listen, John, this is 7:39 PM.
And John, this isn't going to be the golden crowd.